of the Board of Education is called to order. Mr. Clark, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice? Mr. McManus? Ms. Walker? Ms. Craybill? Ms. Adams? Mr. Wildebohr?
Present.
Mr. Volier?
So, welcome to the New Hanover County Board of Education's July Regular Board Meeting. Thank you all for joining us in person and in the remote viewing audience. We value and appreciate your interest, your participation, your advocacy on behalf of all the students and staff in New Hanover County schools. I hope you have noticed as you, at the Board of Education, recently approved Rules of Decorum, posted on the Call to the Audience page, on the front door of the BOE Center, at the sign-in table, at the table in the back where the agendas are, and exerted on the screen now. So, do I have a... He can go ahead and put that up. But I know you all can read, but I hope that you will follow along because since there were a few changes and additions to what I have been announcing every meeting since my first one in January, I'd like to call your attention to them and read them out loud. The Call to the Audience rules will be described when we get to that part of the agenda. It should be in... Are you looking for it? Okay, it is, I'm sorry, it is... If you look at Call to the Audience, that's where a handout is. I reorganized it just a little bit for easier posting, but that's where it is. Okay. So, first, respectful behavior. Please silence all cell phones during the meeting. Remain respectful and courteous to all in attendance. This includes the Board of Education members and the New Hanover County Schools staff. Refrain from using language that is lewd or obscene. Shouting, calling out, and/or making disruptive noises during the board meeting is prohibited. Approaching the dais without invitation by anyone other than staff is prohibited. Use of signs at board meetings. Signs are permitted but can only be raised to accompany a speaker during his or her allotted Call to the Audience speaking time. Signs cannot be raised in obstruction to the views of members in the audience or as a disruption to board proceedings. Signs cannot contain lewd or obscene wording or images. These Rules of Decorum are not an exhaustive list and may be revised as needed. They apply... There you go. They apply to all official meetings that are conducted by the New Hanover County Board of Education. All attendees at board meetings must abide by these Rules of Decorum. Disrupting or disturbing meetings and/or engaging in threatening behavior may result in consequences, including but not limited to, removal from board meetings and in the case of threatening or severely disruptive behavior being trespassed from New Hanover County Board of Education. Disruptions to our meeting will not be tolerated, just as they are not tolerated at any other local governmental body meeting, where there are no listed Rules of Decorum, just rather common courtesy and professional courtesy. That said, per General Statute 143-318-17, people who are disrupting the meeting will be asked to leave. If this happens, those people can view the remainder of the meeting via livestream on New Hanover County Schools TV and on New Hanover County Schools YouTube channel. I ask, on behalf of the Board, that each of us do our part to contribute to a successful and non-stressful meeting by treating each other with dignity and respect throughout the meeting, no matter what our thoughts and feelings are about an issue or about a particular person or group, so that the Board can remain focused on completing the governance work necessary for our students, staff, and schools to be successful. On the agenda, please note that the estimate... And I'm done with those, so you don't have to keep scrolling. Thank you. On the agenda, you will note the estimated times for each topic. As a courtesy to and respect for the time of my fellow Board members, the New Hanover County Schools staff, and to the community at large, I intend to stick as closely as possible to those estimated times to keep discussion focused and on point. You can watch the countdown clock on the corner, the upper right-hand corner of the large screens, to see how much time we have left to discuss each item. Okay. So, thank you for listening and thank you for indulging. I won't read those every single meeting, but since they were new, I wanted to make sure that everyone got them. Moving now into board business. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Next on our agenda is our invocation. I'd like to call to the front the Honorable James H. Fason III, Fifth District Court Judge and Pastor of Burge Chapel Missionary Baptist Church.
Good afternoon. May we pray. Almighty God, the Father and the God of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, we come before you on this night, oh God, acknowledging your power, your love, your mercies, and your grace, all of which are without limits. We also come tonight acknowledging our need for you as we navigate the daily issues of everyday life. We also acknowledge, oh God, our need for you as we embark upon the taking on the duties of public service and that we will carry out our duties with integrity and honor and with the wisdom that you provide. We ask you, oh God, to anoint and bless this Board tonight, bless our superintendent and the Board and all of their discussions, that you would lead and guide them in their discussions and lead and guide them in their decisions, so that these decisions will produce positive outcomes for the students, their parents, their teachers, faculty, staff, workers, and all affiliated with the New Hanover County School system. You do these things, oh God, and we shall be so ever careful to give your name the praise for your worthy of it all. And in the name of your Son, Jesus, the Christ, we thank you and we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Judge Fason. So, next, I would like to call to the front Ms. Krista Fason, who is the Assistant Principal from New Hanover High School, and she will give us a most fabulous rendition of the National Anthem. Do you want to come up here to the front? Yeah, Fason's all, so they can see you. Do you need help with anything? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fason. And just in case you recognize that there is the same last name, proud father went first and then wonderful daughter went second, so thank you both for being with us this evening. Next, Stephanie Walker, our Board Vice Chair, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we can be seated. Okay, next up is one of my favorite parts about our board meetings is where we get to recognize some outstanding folks within our school system. Ms. Clegg?
I am excited to share that our Communications and Outreach Division received ten national awards through the National School of Public Relations Association. The division's mission is to tell the stories of our students and staff and share the good work they are doing, and we're so proud to have received these recognitions. They were awarded one Excellence in Newsletters Award, three Excellence in Writings, Excellence in Podcasting, Excellence in Videography, a Merit in Writing, a Merit in Marketing, and two Merit in Videography Awards. Congratulations to Christina Bean, Russell Clark, Chase Fulton, Kevin Hubbard, Caleb Price, Anita Baggy, myself, Caress Clegg, and Josh Smith, Chief Communication Officer. If you guys would come up to the front for your... Our next recognition, we are thrilled to announce that a New Hanover County School student has received a scholarship to attend Space Camp through the Astro Girls 2022 Scholarship. The Astro Girls Scholarship Fund was created to send young girls from underrepresented minorities to Space Camp for free. I would like to invite Leanna Harrison Nelson, a rising fourth grader at Snipes Academy, recipient of one of two annual scholarships created by aerospace engineer and rocket scientist Tiffany Davis. Leanna? The scholarship is worth $1,300, and Leanna will be attending Space Camp during the 2023 year. And we'd also like to recognize her mom, who's here with her, and Assistant Principal, Dr. Stephanie Willis of Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. Congratulations, Leanna. Congratulations to Mr. Norris's class at Sunset Park Elementary School for winning a nationwide math competition through Splash Learn. The series of virtual games allow the students to practice math concepts in a motivating way while also gearing up for end-of-year assessments. Among over 200,000 classrooms nationwide and 400,000 students, the students at Sunset Park placed first. We are proud of these hard-working Sharks and their awesome teacher. Today with us, we have Mr. Norris, Principal Diego Lahaki, and Jack representing his first grade class. Board Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Faust, that concludes our recognitions of the evening. Please give all of our recognitions another round of applause.
Okay, next up, Dr. Barnes, with Administrative Introductions. Also, another favorite part of mine.
Now, we wish to have the opportunity to introduce you to all the new staff for New Hanover County Schools that are coming this summer, so these are just some of the highlights for you. We'd like to start with introducing Ashley Sutton. She has served as our interim Chief Finance Officer, moving into the Chief Finance Officer position, and she has previously been a Chief Finance School Officer at Duplin County Schools, so I guess you can just wait for when you arrive.
I think we are quite familiar with Ms. Sutton.
Correct, yeah.
Over the past couple months. Thank you, welcome.
Not attending tonight, the new principal at the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley is Lauren Nussfinger-Nalepa, who was previously at Howe Pre-K. So, we're appreciating her moving into that role. Like to introduce Mr. Samuel Smithson. Mr. Smithson served as an AP at Marvin Ridge Middle School in Union County. He's been a social studies teacher and a head coach at the Central Academy of Technology and Arts and Marvin Ridge High School. And he'll be going to Myrtle Grove Middle School, sorry.
Thank you, guys, I'm excited to be here.
Yay, welcome to the beach.
Next, also not attending is Laura DeWalt. Ms. DeWalt is our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and she is currently the Director of Teaching and Learning with Durham Public Schools, and she'll be coming in next week. Next up, we have...
If you're watching, welcome.
Next up, we have the Assistant Principal at Ashley High School, Ms. Meredith Harris. She's been serving as the Department Chair for Effective Children at Ashley High School, and she is a Principal Fellow from East Carolina University, so Meredith.
Hi, I'm really excited to be here. I graduated from New Hanover County Schools in 2010, and I'm excited to continue my journey with New Hanover County Schools.
Very good. Congratulations.
Also not able to attend is a name you know already, Ms. Lauren Keflinitis is the new Executive Director of Elementary Schools, and she most recently has been the principal at Bradley Creek.
Is she with us? Nope.
She is not attending with us tonight.
If you're watching, congratulations, Lauren.
Also in our Executive Director of Schools Support and the Secondary Schools is Ms. Pranny Presley. She is not able to attend, she's closing out her work in Charlotte Mecklenburg City Schools, and she is the Executive Director of Educational Leadership at CMS for the past several years. Also with us tonight is the new Assistant Principal at Masonboro Elementary School, Ms. Melanie Ryan, who just completed her administrative work and has been the instructional coach at Alderman Elementary School.
Thank you, I'm very excited to start my journey at Masonboro.
Yeah, we are too. Thank you.
And last but not least, a late-breaking that had to cancel this evening, Ms. Andrea Sidbury has served here before. She most recently was the Assistant Finance Officer with Sampson County Schools, and she is now going to be the executive, no, the payroll supervisor for where the Finance Department. So, thank you and welcome to everyone.
Welcome. Thank you so much, Dr. Barnes. Okay, next up on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Faust?
Good evening. We're having a couple hearing issues, hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you good, we can see you good.
Okay. First, congratulations again to our award-winning Communications Department. John, well done, most appreciative and most thankful for the work that you do. So, I want to start with very good news. Governor Cooper signed the $27.9 billion state budget into law on Monday. The district will benefit from salary increases and bonuses from the state budget. Specifically, Assistant Principals, Teachers, Instructional Support Staff will see an average increase of about 4.2%, depending on the years of educator experience. Principals will see an increase of about 4%. Non-certified staff will see an increase of either 4% or the amount necessary to get the hourly compensation to $15 per hour. As for bonuses, teachers' performance bonuses for grades three through eight math or reading were reinstated and will be based on the school year 21-22 results. Teacher performance bonuses for AP, IB, AIC, and CET continue based on the 21-22 results, and principal performance bonuses will be reinstated based on the school year 21-22 results. Next slide, please. I'm happy to report that we continue to fill vacancies at an incredible rate, attracting the top educators and classified professionals from around the country. Last month, I shared, we were 96% fully staffed for certified positions. We're now 98%. Classified staff was 94% fully staffed last month, and now we're at 96%. We have 20 schools with zero teacher vacancies and only five schools that have three to five, I'm sorry, and only five schools with three or more teacher vacancies. We will still have three district-level administrative vacancies, Principal Shipit Gregory, Bradley Creek, and the Chief of EDI position. All three positions will be interviewed for this week. Finally, the Instruction and Accountability Division is creating an online resource to make it easier for parents to navigate the curriculum content in real time. So, actually, that means that parents or whomever will be able to go to our website and see our standards, pacing guides, and the map of what we are teaching in our classes. These resources are known as the Scope and Sequence and provide an overview of what is being taught in each class, as well as a timeline for parents to follow. Links and additional resources will be made available, and we will have the projected or the project completed and posted in our website by August 15. So, we have some that are ready now, but we're wanting to roll it out all at one time. So, if you give us to August 15, you'll be able to see all of our courses. This concludes my report, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Faust, appreciate that. So, next up is the Board Chair's Report. I'd like to start off with just letting everyone know that we no longer have to take a mandatory mask vote each meeting, that that ended in school year 21-22. I would just like to take a moment to describe the Town Hall that is coming up on July the 19th. So, as you know, the New Hanover County Board of Education voted to hold two Town Halls events in 2022. The first is scheduled for this Tuesday, well, a week from now, July 19th, from 5:00 until 7:00 PM at the Board of Education Center. The audience capacity will remain at 170 people, the same as for regular meetings. The New Hanover County Sheriff's Office will support the event, and visitors will pass through a security checkpoint upon entry. The event will be livestreamed. Josh Smith and John White, a professional communications specialist, will serve as moderators. The Town Hall will be in three parts. First will be a panel discussion where pre-solicited questions from the community will be asked. Communications has been soliciting questions since last week across multiple platforms. Similar questions and themes will determine the questions asked of the panel. Next portion of the Town Hall will be an event Q and A, where questions that have come in during the event itself, unlikely as a follow-up to earlier questions that have been asked. A QR code will be displayed on the large screen throughout, well, these large screens throughout the Town Hall, so that people there can know the number to send their questions to. And then finally, there will be an audience Q and A, where audience members are able to ask their questions directly to us. Board members will have three minutes to answer questions in all three of these parts. So, I hope that explains the, an outline of what we plan on doing next month. Well, not next month. Next week, yes. Okay. So, all right, so next up on our agenda is information. So, first, I'd like to call up to the front. Is this you, Dr. Fason? No, Shannon Smiles, I'm sorry. I'm not used to seeing you this early in the evening. So, Shannon's going to give us a report for the Pre-K district-wide student data.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity for me to share with you services provided by New Hanover County Schools for our youngest learners, preschool. So, I'm going to focus on last school year, 21-22. We served 918 students. Important to note that in 2014, we served 415 students. We are now located at seven public school sites and 10 private sites. We are now serving three-year-olds. In 2014, we were only serving four-year-olds. So, it gives the opportunity for some of our three-year-olds to have two years of high-quality experience in preschool before going to kindergarten. We do use a curriculum. Support from board members and the district and the community, that's how we do this. And we do it through multiple funding sources. We're the contract administrator for NC Pre-K state funding. We house the Head Start Federal Grant, and we also receive county funding for slots. It cannot be done in one sole funding. It has to be multiple funding sources. So, next slide, please. Next. There you go. We do use a curriculum. It's evidence-based, it's state-approved. So, and it is in alignment with the standard courses of study for North Carolina. So, we have additional curriculums this past year that we implemented, some district initiatives and some ongoing. We use conscious discipline for social-emotional learning to promote that self-regulation and self-skills. Letters, which is a new state initiative for the science of reading for literacy support. Foundations for literacy support. And Eureka Math for math support, which is in alignment with our friends in kindergarten. And we do assess, we use a formative assessment, Teaching Strategies Gold, through ongoing data collection and progress monitoring, covering 38 objectives in six learning domains. So, what does this look like in literacy? So, the children are writing their names, they're knowing letters to the alphabet, phonics, recognition, parts of the book. How does it look like in math? Sequencing, patterning, numbers, counting. And so, this authentic observation system helps us get to know the children well. What can they do? What do they need help on? What are their interests? What are their strengths? What are their needs? And how we drive our instruction to engage learning based on their interests and what it is they need and want to learn. The purpose is to observe authentically and to document children's development and learning over time. We support, we guide, and it plans our instruction when we use informative assessment. And we do three checkpoints a year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. So, what are we looking at? We're looking at, okay, how are we entering? What spectrum are we entering when we enter preschool at three or four years old? So, what are the areas that we're below in? How can we provide support systems and early intervention to get that child up to standards and expectations? And we look for those children that are accomplished, okay? Who's exceeding? How can we enrich that environment and get them to continue to learn on their pacing? So, we take formative assessment and data, and we record this into the platform with artifacts such as anecdotal notes, observation notes, pictures, and we do our checkpoints three times a year. So, this slide is specific for those children who are now going into kindergarten this upcoming school year, for public schools only. So, this looks promising. Your blue... Your blue, it looks kind of blue all here, but your blue is for emerging, and the purple, which is the taller of the graph, that is meeting growth expectations. So it does look promising. So we took this data and we connected it to New Hanover County School Strategic Plan. So we want to increase, our goal is to increase, the number of preschool students meeting or exceeding the expectations and Teaching Strategies objectives aligned with the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory that is done in kindergarten in the beginning of the year. So we want this data at the end of the year to have 75% or exceeding. So moving forward and looking forward, so what now? So we are going to provide support to teachers and administrators for the implementation of the core curriculum, and we're going to do it well. We're going to provide professional development. We're going to create experts in the assessment system, so that we're collecting high-quality data from these students and authentically and with fidelity, we know where they're going and where we need to take them. And we're going to increase data dives, and we're going to start earlier. And we're going to increase that contact with our administrators and our teachers. And we're going to inform instruction, and we're going to provide hands-on PD and ongoing PLCs. So for this upcoming school year, we are expanding our program by six classrooms through county funding, which provides us with nine public school sites and 1,008 students for next school year. So I'm so proud to, my team and I are so proud to be a part of the school district family, pre-K 12th grade. And I wanted to allow some space for any questions, comments, thoughts, or talking points. Do you want me to dance?
Mr. Boyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Smiles, thank you very much. I know I've really enjoyed over the past four years. One of the highlights for me has been getting to work with you and with your team. Projecting forward, you know, we just came out of a tight budget, but it looks like you guys are scheduled and slated to grow even more and to even more sites. I know pre-K is a big focus of the commissioners. So can you talk a little bit about what you project moving forward and sort of the commitment that the school system is going to have to make to, you know, meet the moment and meet what the commissioners are trying to do here in New Hanover County with early childhood education?
So excellent question, and I can speak briefly about that. There is a drafted MOU to contract for these six additional classrooms, and our hope is to be up and running by August. So it'll be 180 students, and included into that budget is support for those teachers, teacher assistants. We have two adults in the room at all times for low ratio and high quality to support our professional development, to support instructional teams, family specialists to be that liaison, and to continue with the data tracking. We track data not only on academics and instructionally driven, but we do the health, nutrition, and all those statistics that are important with child development. So within that MOU, there is support for those fundings for growth.
Thank you.
And so we will be serving at Blair and Murrayville.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Yeah, thank you so much. I love this. I mean, I'm a huge advocate.
I know, that's why I was going to dance. I'm so thrilled.
I think this is going to help a lot. I know in the past, we've had a huge waitlist. Do you feel like this obviously has been alleviated somewhat? Do you know, I mean, have the waitlists gone up and down? I know since we've got more classrooms, they've gone down a little bit, but the need is there, right?
Well, thank you, Ms. Walker, because there's so much work behind the scenes before we release these students to the experts and superstars in those buildings, so much work. And we're doing another placement on Thursday, so it is a qualifying program. Very hard coming out of COVID, knowing those exact numbers, but I feel very confident that we're going to, with this expansion, be able to offer more slots for three-year-olds, which will give them that two-year experience. So yeah, early intervention is less prevention.
Awesome, thank you.
Again, thank you so much for this invite. Appreciate it.
We have one more question.
One more quick question.
One more.
Okay, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to agree with everyone on the board that I think this is outstanding. This is wonderful. Thank you for all your hard work and your team's hard work. Are we fully staffed at this point? How are we looking? Have we hired all the new teachers we'll need and teacher assistants and?
To the best of my knowledge, classroom staff have been recommended.
Okay.
High quality.
Awesome.
Of course.
Excellent, of course. Yeah, we are going to be taking that lead. We're going to elevate this.
Just to comment, accolades that are well deserved. Just your personal presentation, arena speaks volumes about how hard it all worked. This is so crucial. So thank you, and hopefully if we can do anything to keep this going, it's not. Let us.
Appreciate the support and community involvement. That's where it starts. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next up on our agenda is Policy 4302 update. And 4302, for those of you who don't know, is the use of seclusion and restraint. Ms. Barnum?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to share some things that I have shared before with regard to, I can't do both, I can't see you with these on or off. I'm going to share some information that I've shared with you before and also give you a few updates. So some of this is going to sound like a little bit of a reminder, but I need to frame it in this way. So in alignment with your strategic plan of establishing learning environments that are, of course, supportive, culturally responsive, and focused on building relationships and community, our team that has been auditing and working through our processes has continued to do this work. Our work is really evaluating necessary changes, of course, and the increased fidelity measures, along with discontinuance of ineffective methods. One thing that I want to highlight is that this is incremental work, incremental steps to reduce the use of, and really to reduce or remove the need for this as a safety measure. We're not quite there yet, however, this is the work that's going on. Trauma-sensitive approach, of course, backed by evidence-based research, we know focuses on the brain-based and brain-informed practices that really utilize staff skills in the prevention of crisis situations, as well as responding to our students who are in crisis due to stress and trauma. We are operating under plans to continue and expand this work. We have contractual partnerships going on now with Lives in the Balance and with expanding our trauma-sensitive schools training. This has been a little interesting to do this through some of the budget, budget work, but we're fine. This approach most specifically, though, relies on the relationships that staff have with our students and their ability to really understand that difference between intentional and adaptive versus maladaptive responses to stress. This is that work of regulation. We have regulation programs already in place, but we're talking about continually expanding that. So our continued work requires our review of each school's school plan for the management of student behavior per Policy 4302. We know that 4302R, the use of seclusion and restraint, is the regulatory attachment to Policy 4302, which is the school plan for the management of student behavior, which says that every school creates their school plan as a part of their school improvement plan, which we know those are being completed now, they're due in the district by mid-September and to you in October. So that continued work really requires us to spend some time looking at what the schools have created as their plan for the management of student behavior. This ongoing work helps us inform the next steps of any use of seclusion and restraint. But I will mention that all administrators in their summer leadership professional development later in July will be further exploring this. Specifically, documentation of incidents, debriefing models, and enhanced training will be reviewed for increased fidelity towards the strategic mission. I do want to highlight the changes that we know and our team is working on, and we're incrementally seeing this to fruition. Our teachers and support staff need to be included in this professional development in carrying out these policies as they are written, as their plans are written from their school level. And the dramatic changes that we are focusing on are really three shifts. One, an improvement in understanding any and all factors related to challenging behaviors of our students. The next, focusing on the mechanisms, creating mechanisms that are proactive versus reactive and are collaborative versus unilateral. Our administrators later in the month are going to be seeing more of that in our guidance, and they're prepared for those changes. And then thirdly, really creating structures and processes so that our students and the adults that are supporting them are solving the problems together. So look forward to more updates as we review the plans that are submitted from the schools based on Policy 4302, and then necessary updates that come behind that with these regulations.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Barnum?
I think, sorry. I have a question. I just, I think that we had discussed that it had to go through policy committee, the 4302R, that would be the process once you guys are ready, and then that would come to the board that way.
Yes, absolutely, because the regulation would definitely need to be adjusted in accordance with what the schools have created in line with 4302. Yes.
Mr. Walker, Mr. McManus. Sorry.
So in essence, what you're doing is after the workshops, pretty intensive this summer, then they'll be given time during the beginning of the year to find out what works in their particular environment, what doesn't, to make adjustments as necessary under your tutelage as your heart. But, so really appreciate what you're doing and how you're doing it, so that we're not throwing them under the bus, so to speak, anyone involved in this process, no matter where you are, and we're thinking it through and giving it time for everyone to be adjusted, I guess is the best word. So thank you.
Right.
And that will be done, do you have maybe a goal next?
Well, our goal is always, you know, yesterday or as soon as possible, but the goal is to make sure that our staff feel confident in the skills that they're using and believe that they can all be successful. Our staff wants safety in the classroom, no question. Where we can reduce any use that wasn't needed, that I feel like that that work is well underway. It's preventing those crisis situations from becoming those crisis situations. And again, it's relying on the relationships of our staff and also the professional knowledge while they're working inside the classroom, but we have to utilize their voice in this process while we're giving them the best tools we can in their toolbox.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walter.
First of all, I want to thank you again for all your hard work. So you'll be meeting with the principals the end of this month. When would you anticipate meeting with the, or training our EC teachers and other teachers?
So we have ongoing training, but we are working through contracts, again, with Lives in the Balance, and we have 10 schools that we're, we don't have that contract set yet, but it's working. It's always interesting finding that budget code, but we have it. We have a budget code. And then our next work with Trauma-Informed Schools, my team actually wrote a grant for that work, and we're working with the provider to set that professional development up. So professional development calendars are also, I know, you know, are also fun to try to find the time, but we are well underway with making sure that those tools are working for our staff.
Right, thank you.
So I don't have a timeline, but I will provide you updates regularly as we're doing.
Well, and if you remember, one milestone that Ms. Barnum mentioned to us was school improvement plans, that they're not due to us until they're due in end of September to her department and Dr. Fason, and then we get them in October. So that should be, you know, that is one milestone that we really don't want to rush. But, okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next, we have a very exciting presentation from the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce about Career and Leadership Development Academy. So I've got Dr. Fason will kick us off, and welcome.
Yeah, I just.
Welcome Natalie English, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and Laura Brogdon Primavera, Director of Programs and Initiatives. So take it away, ladies.
Well, I just wanted to introduce these ladies, but.
I did, sorry.
No, it is okay. We have an exciting program, and I'm not going to steal their thunder, and it's a great partnership and collaboration, and we're excited. And you're going to be too, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrician. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's exciting for me. I've had the great fortune of representing business for all of my career, and I'm not going to tell you how long that is, because it'll age me, it'll date me, and I don't want to do that because I look younger than I am, but the biggest issue through all of those decades of representing business has been talent and access to workforce that's ready to work. And so for years now, I've had this vision of how do we make sure that we're supporting our school system and our educators in creating that, the awareness of a pathway to success, a pathway to prosperity? And it matters to me, it's innate in me to want to help people be successful. And one of those ways that we do that at the chamber is to create a climate that's friendly to business, because business employs people. If you employ people, they get out of poverty. And so it's a continuous cycle, but one of the critical components is talent development. And so it's probably been six or eight years ago, I heard about a program in another community, because that's what we do in the Chamber of Commerce business, is we get together and we share ideas. We call it, instead of research and development, our R and D is ripoff and duplicate. And so I heard about this program, and so what we're creating is different, and I can't wait for Laura to tell you some of the details, but it's similar. And so we decided that to create that pipeline that we need and the awareness of the pathway to success that requires some people to even be aware of what jobs are available. I remember when my son, who, by the way, just graduated from Hoggard, he's going to UNC Charlotte, so I'm excited about that, he also, though, when he was nine, swore he was going to be an NFL quarterback, right? And there was nothing I could do to change his mind, there was nothing any teacher could do to change his mind. Then, to my surprise, in early high school years, he was going to be in law enforcement, and I was grateful that he had that calling. He's transitioned yet again, and probably will another five times. I mean, he wants to go into broadcasting, which is what my father did and I did before I got into the chamber business, and so it's kind of a natural for all of us in the family. But I say that because his ideas changed the more he got exposed to what opportunities there are, and we talked about lots of others, those were just the key three. So if we're not exposing kids to the opportunities in their backyards, when I got to Wilmington five years ago, I heard, you got to leave Wilmington to get a good job. You got to leave Wilmington, you can go to school here, but you got to leave to get a good job. You can come back after you make your money. That's just not true anymore. There are a lot of jobs, a lot of growing businesses in our community. So I'm going to let Laura talk to you about the Career and Leadership Development Academy that's been created. We're going to start with 47th graders next year, this next school year. Laura?
Next school year, that's like next month.
Well, it's tomorrow for some of our kids.
First of all, I wanted to thank Dr. Fason and Katrina and Richard and DeMarcus. Without their support, and on the student and faculty-facing side of things, building this program wouldn't matter. So thank you for this. I'm really enjoying it, and I can't wait to see where we end up August 8th, 9th, 10th. So we're going to start with applicant interviews. The candidates, the 7th graders, will have a conversation with a leadership Wilmington alumni, where they're going to receive feedback on how they executed the interview process, so what they did well, what they could work on, and what they should try next time. So that's going to be working on those oral communication skills. And then we're going to have an orientation on August 20th, on a Saturday, so that the families, the parents, can come. We'll have the opportunity for students to get to know one another, because there'll be five students from all eight middle schools, and then their families will also gain a better understanding of what's going to be taking place over the next of what's going to be taking place over the next eight months. Industry sectors and employers that we're going to be working with and explore careers with are in digital technologies, warehouse and logistics, life sciences and pharmaceuticals, hospitality, real estate, architecture and engineering, manufacturing, energy and clean technologies, and film. And if any of those sound familiar, that's from the recent New Hanover Economic Mobility Report. So, we are starting with that information and building this program from that. Students are going to develop what we call power skills. Others call soft skills, but we call them power skills. And we're going to be working on critical thinking and communication, teamwork, leadership, work ethic, all of those things that those employers want those employees to have. Not only during the one-hour leadership session each month, they're going to be learning about things like financial literacy, dressing for success, public speaking skills, active listening, but they're also going to be challenged to work together to write a blog after each session in a team of five, and put together a final presentation for their schools. That will also help us with our marketing, because they're going to be sharing with those sixth graders what they just went through over those last eight months. And then, as they enter eighth grade, they'll be serving as leaders and ambassadors and mentors to those seventh graders to continue furthering those leadership skills. There are visions for future programs for high school students, and also reaching every seventh grade student in New Hanover County, more than just the forty we hope to pilot with this year. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Adams?
I'm fired up about this. I'm so excited, so thank you Natalie, thank you Laura, for, you know, making this happen, and thank you to the New Hanover County Schools team. I mean, this is an incredible partnership, and you're right, everybody said you couldn't work here. I remember my husband saying that, you know, ten years ago when we moved here. It's like, "We're going to have to find a job from outside of the area," you know, but it's great to be at the beach for a few years, so this is great, it's about creating from within. I guess those are fantastic industries that you're targeting, and they're right in line with what our needs are. How are you recruiting the companies? Or are they coming to you when they've heard about this and said, "Hey, how do I get involved?"
I've crafted a very nice introductory message, overview of the program, and they are quickly turning around to schedule Zoom meetings to learn more, and are asking how they can engage.
So, they're stepping up not only to help provide the curriculum, I say that with quotation marks, but also to be mentors in some of the programming, and then financially. They're interested in helping to fund this, businesses care deeply about what's happening with our kids, because they are the future workforce. Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, so you say you've got five kids from all, eight middle schools? And what is the criteria, and how do the kids know to apply?
We'll have to defer that one to Patrice, Ms. Fugil, she, the staff team helped us with that part of it.
Come on back up. Oh, pull the mic, okay.
The counselors, sorry, the counselors and the principals are working to identify five students. We left the criteria, I'm going to say loose, because we wanted to, them to have the opportunity to reach those students that they thought would best serve this program. So, we are not necessarily reaching for the students who we always reward, or those students who we work with because they are more of a challenge. We wanted to help students sometimes that are not, they're middle students that we sometimes don't have particular programs for, but we did leave it loose for them to identify the students. So, they're working on that process now. So, it is the counselors and the principals who are bringing that to us.
So, the students themselves aren't informed, you're identifying the students, and then you approach them, as opposed to students knowing about the opportunity?
Yeah, because of the limited numbers, you don't want to get too many students excited about a program that at this time, we can only serve five. So, we didn't want to do that, we're hoping that, as you know, the numbers increase, and as the word gets around, it probably will look different the next year. But to get a number of middle schools excited about a program when we can only at this time select five, we wanted to be careful about that.
Mr. McManus?
Thank you. I understand that everything has to start somewhere as a beginning, but this, absolutely to me, and I believe most people, it's so vitally important that the young of these students have an opportunity to at least taste all the chocolates in the world, and which ones they like or not. And sometimes they come back to it, I know we talked about this a long time ago, so I'm really excited. I do hope that we can expand this, because five students per, it's not, that's beginning of, well, positive, it's the beginning, so.
We want to prove the concept, Mr. McManus, and then we're running.
I know you two are. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bullier?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that my fellow board members have said. Madam President, Ms. Brogdon Primavera, thank you guys so much, and I share your vision. You know, we always pay lip service to the idea of, well, you know, you don't have to go to college. And we don't really do anything to show people what that might look like. So, you know, if you're told, "You can have beef, but all we have here is chicken," well, then nobody knows that they might love beef. And so, I think what you're doing is introducing a new staple into the diet of New Hanover County Schools curriculum, and my goal would be to see it expand to all seventh graders, and let every single kid have a taste of what can be outside of a four-year college. So, this is a really exciting day, and I thank you guys so much. Dr. Faison, thank you, this is a really exciting, exciting movement, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, what we didn't mention is we don't intend to just expose them to the sector, but to all the types of jobs and what that ladder might look like, to get from that entry-level job with a high school degree or diploma to every level, and how they can better themselves, and the companies that'll actually pay for that for them. So, really exposing them to all these opportunities.
The, so I wanted to add in there too, the areas that you picked, obviously, it sounds like we have, you know, the vertical articulation through Cape Fear Community College and UNCW, so that we could keep them here if they chose, or they can go off and, you know, do whatever. Two things, so one visit per month, do they, is that during school? Like on a Thursday afternoon, or Thursday day, or, I mean, so that's worked into their school's, their school's schedule?
Sure, Madam Chair, the idea, the Chamber of Commerce in 2017 adopted a strategic plan that included creating additional leadership development programs similar to Leadership Wilmington, that would touch different groups of people, and so this is one of those responses to that desire by the Chamber's board. In this case, we decided that we needed to help build those skills in the younger, back in the, back further in the pipeline. And so, yes, the idea is they would meet once, one day a month, and we're working in partnership with the school system staff to have them transported safely. We, they are making us abide by everything we have to, and we're happily doing so to keep the children safe and protected.
That sounds good, the, as a graduate of Leadership Wilmington, I love it. I mean, I want to go back and do remedial, you know, and do it again, so much has changed since 1999, when I did that, so I talk about dating. One thing too, could you tell us just briefly, like, how long has this been in the works? You know, I know that our superintendent is on your board, so, the, and I'm sure he's, I can't see his face here, but I know he's beaming, because this is exactly what's up his alley. So, about how long has this been going on?
Well, in my head, it's been going on for about twelve years.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, it took an opportunity to be in my position, which just happened five and a half years ago, and then the opportunity of finding the right team members, and Laura has been on our team now for a year, and then the right superintendent to answer my call when I called with this crazy idea in March. And he introduced Dr. Fugil and I, and we started running. So, it depends on who you're asking, I think they would say yesterday, I say twelve years ago.
Well, it sounds awesome, and I'm glad I heard you say Ms. Fugil's name too, because some of that is definitely in our CTE curriculum. So, thank you so much for coming, and I'm glad we got you worked in, that you didn't have to, like, drive on safely to get here.
No, no, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here. Okay, next up is call to the audience. Before we get started there. Sorry. Okay, all right, you have five minutes. Go ahead. Hang on, guys, I'm sorry, five minutes. Yes.
Mr. Ball. Time to shoot it.
Oh, yeah, thanks, sir.
Oh, my God.
It's right there. It's right there in front of me.
Okay, folks, welcome back from break. Um, next on our agenda is call to the audience. Um, I already read through, um, several of the, the newer complaints. I mean, newer complaints, the newer, um, written rules of decorum. Um, I do want to, um, add a few more now that we made specifically, um, in respect to call to the audience. Um, your speaking time is limited to two minutes and you will be able to see your time up there on the clock. Um, speakers must keep their remarks within those allocated timeframes. And at two minutes, they will be asked to sit down. Speakers who sign up for call to the audience must be present and cannot yield their time to anyone else. If the speaker's name is called, but the speaker is not present for the assigned time slot, the speaker will be placed at the bottom of the list and called again at the end. Speakers can offer comments and criticism directed at substantive ideas, actions, and procedures of the board or individual board members. But in the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, speakers are to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at the board, individual board members, members of our staff, and members of the general public. As I indicated before, signs are permitted and can be used to accompany the speaker during their allotted call to the audience speaking time. Those bringing signs in support of a speaker can stand with the speaker during the speaker's designated time as long as the person holding the sign does not walk the center aisle. The sign holder may also stand at their seat and hold their sign. Signs may not contain lewd or obscene wording or images. After call to the audience is concluded, signs cannot be raised in obstruction of the view of members of the audience or as a disruption to board proceedings. These rules of decorum are, of course, not exhaustive and may be revised at any time. I'd like to just remind you that the general statute, um, that I indicated before says that you are, um, if you are not... Lost my place. Um, any person who willingly interrupts, disturbs, and inter- disrupts the official business and who upon being directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer, me, willfully refuses to leave the meeting is guilty of a class-two misdemeanor. All right, so now that that's gonna happen, so let's just roll right in to, uh, you see your names up there, you see the clock up there. Um, Peter Rowitch.
Shirts and pants and blouses and slacks, belts and purses and shoes, suits and dresses, sweater vests and Halloween party costumes. These things go in a closet. Kids don't belong in a closet in school. These things go in a closet. Putting kids in a closet is cruel. Sheets and linens, a pillow that fits in, electric blankets and quilts, soap and shampoo, a box of tissues, and multivitamin pills. These things go in a closet. Kids don't belong in a closet in school. These things go in a closet. Putting kids in a closet is cruel. I know you prefer to call it by another name. Seclusion room or a padded closet, they're really both the same. Mops and buckets to rinse the suds with vacuum cleaners and brooms, laundry detergent and dryer sheets, and Clorox for the bathroom. These things go in a closet. Kids don't belong in a closet in school. These things go in a closet. Putting kids in a closet is cruel. Putting kids in a closet is cruel. Vote to end the seclusion rooms.
That's a tough one to follow. Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, Board. Tonight, I'm here to announce that Constitution Day Wilmington will be celebrated downtown on Saturday, September 17th. It's going to occur concurrently with the American Craft Walk Festival, where thousands of people are expected to attend. Constitution Day Wilmington is an unaffiliated, nonpartisan, local grassroots group. Our goal is to renew awareness about the U.S. Constitution and its content through musical and dramatic arts entertainment, interactive activities like our We the People Wall and the Constitution quilt, as well as a star-spangled scavenger hunt, and through distributing fun facts about the Constitution. Ultimately, we are commemorating the signing of our nation's founding document in 1787. So why am I sharing this with you? Well, there's a 2004 statute designating this federal holiday, and it carries a congressional mandate that requires that schools receiving federal funds from K through higher ed must hold an educational program about the U.S. Constitution for its students during that week. The U.S. Department of Education website states, "We encourage local officials and educational organizations to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together community members to reflect on the enduring strength of our Constitution." So this event helps serve that purpose, and we're prepared to generate volunteers to read and lead in schools to help bring compliance with this statute in New Hanover County. We need your help in spreading the word about the event and in helping generate support for it. We would love to have New Hanover County Schools, students, artists, bands, dancers, junior ROTC to participate. And I'll be sending an email later this week with the details, and our website is constitutiondayilm.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. Next up, Yolanda Hernandez. Yolanda Hernandez. Gail Major.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in a while. I got two strikes at the last meeting I was at, Ms. Crable. I was felt special. Um, I'm here today, um, I was hoping I'd see Dr. Faust. As you know, I'm still working on the fingerprinting for all in New Hanover County, and if I'm updated correctly, I think we just have new incoming teachers. Um, with that said, it's been a year now, I think it was a year in June, so now we're going into 13 months, where we still have not taken care of that business. So I urge you to do so, because now where we're at is, as I had said, told you numerous times in the past, we were going to be taking it to the state level. It's there now. So I'm representing Facts Task Force 2.0. We will be looking at the fingerprinting. We will be looking at books. We will be looking at curriculum. We will be looking at mental health. We will be looking at people. The law firm is looking at fingerprinting right now. So I'm giving you that information. I have asked you to come to the table numerous times in this 13 months, and all I get is the runaround. I'm done, and we're moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Major. Loretta Stackhouse.
Good evening. I support ending the use of seclusion rooms by the 2023-2024 school year. The data for the county as of March 31, 2022, for school year 2021-22 reflects the use of seclusion rooms as 148 times down from 899 times in 2018-2019 school year. Restraints were used 95 times, down from 33 times in the school year 2018-2019. Vast changes in use have occurred. With the change in mindset and change in policy 4302-ARRA by school year 23-24, the county can end the use of seclusion rooms and restraints with the following exceptions: If there is an emergency situation and seclusion is necessary to protect a student or other person from imminent, serious physical harm after other non-physical interventions have failed. And the student's IEP describes the specific behaviors and circumstances in which seclusion may be used, and the parent has provided written consent. Please change the policy. 4302-ARRA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stackhouse. Natasha Tew.
Good evening. I am Natasha Tew, which I'm sure all of you remember. I'm representing Hanover County Moms for Liberty. I'd like to talk tonight, um, about the pornography books in our schools, even though our DA deemed it protected by the First Amendment. I'd like to inform you that's not the case. Um, child pornography is not protected by Free Speech Amendment. And those who support it and promote it and allow it to be available to our children are in violation of federal laws. I'd like to repeat some of those laws to you that you're gonna be in violation of. Um, 18 U.S. Code Child Pornography 2252, 18 U.S. Code 2252A Sexual Exploitation of Minors, 18 U.S. Code 1466A Obscene Visual Representations of Sexual Abuse of Children. Pursuant to the 18 U.S. Code, child porn- child pornography is defined by federal statute as any visual depiction, including photograph, film, video, picture, or computer, or computer-generated image or picture, whether made or produced by electronic, mechanical, or other means that features sexually explicit conduct. And the production of such visual depiction involves the use of a minor engaging in sexually explicit conduct. There are several books on our shelves that do this. I would say more than a handful. I'm sure you don't want your children reading that. It is your responsibility as a parent, my responsibility as a parent, to teach my child about sexuality, not the teachers. Moms for Liberty is dedicated to fighting for the survival of America by unifying, educating, and empowering parents to defend their parental rights at all levels of government. We will hold decision-makers like you accountable, or we will work to replace you with liberty-minded individuals. We will sta- spread awareness and understanding of the limited role of government, and we will stand together against government overreach and intimidation tactics.
Thank you, Ms. Tew. Um, Robert Bellamy. Robert Bellamy.
How y'all doing? I'm here for Love Our Children. My name is Robert Bellamy. Uh, I just wanna tell a story. Um, back in the day, I was a kid. I got into a lot of trouble. I was placed in a room, and, uh, I didn't know what it, I don't know if it was a se- a seclusion room or what. I just knew that I had to wait there in that room.
Mister, um, Bellamy, could you hold for one second? Is somebody got a phone on? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, I get my time back?
Yeah. I mean, he stopped it.
All right.
You're good.
Okay. I don't know if I was placed in a su- uh, in a seclusion room, um, for what matter was. Uh, I just knew I had to wait for the principal to come in with his paddle, because back then, you know, the kids were beaten. And, um, uh, the things that went through my head was not intended for a kid at my age. I wanted to hurt someone. I wanted to hurt myself. I felt alone. I felt as if I was not loved or wanted. And then, uh, it didn't make me any better at all. I became worse, you know? Uh, science have invented cell phones, and today, there's no need for phone booths. I believe in science. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Um, Laura, Axe Time? Did I get that good? Okay, it's a mouthful, I know.
I practiced.
Thank you. Hi. I'm speaking to you for the first time. I'm a parent, and I worked in a public school for four years. I come from a family of educators and have tremendous respect for those who work with children. I know we can all agree that safety comes first and that every child, every life, is precious. God makes no mistakes. So school should be a place where everyone feels safe and everyone, teachers, staff, and children, treat each other with kindness, dignity, and respect. Some need more guidance in this area than others. We all develop at our own rate. We're not born with maturity or the schools and the understanding of how to manage ourselves. Learning self-discipline and honoring one's self-worth are lifelong efforts. So school must also ma- must remain a safe place where children feel they belong and where all work together to create an environment of positive interactions. Threats, shunning, rejection, and isolation only increase a child's fear and are counterproductive at best. Punishment for acting out or loss of self-control does not equal fair or respectful treatment for a young person. School professionals as well as staff deserve additional training in specific language and methods to de-escalate disruptive behavior. Let's give them more of the tools they need to be positive role models, especially in highly-charged, challenging circumstances. Equip them better to teach each child to respect themselves and each other. Shutting them away doesn't help them feel that they're a precious gift from God. Please vote to change policy 4302-AR and end the use of seclusion by the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Axe Time. Chris Sutton.
How are y'all doing? That was way louder than I was expecting. Um, first thing, do y'all mind changing the sign up for call to audience that's out front to be pulled when the call to audience actually starts? Because apparently the time changes, and some people, it's caused issues. Um, that's actually why I ceded my time last time, is because he couldn't find the sheet. He thought it had already been pulled. Sometimes it's pulled at 30, sometimes it's pulled at 45 minutes into the meeting. Um, I ceded my time, and I hope that we can, we can make it where people can cede their time again, because sometimes things do come up in a hurry where someone needs to be heard that's more important. And if I feel like my minutes are better served by another community member, I feel like we should have that ability. Um, some of the things that I was gonna speak of, uh, last call to audience, I was gonna bring up you, Ms. Adams, storming out. That wasn't really cool, you storming out of the budget and grid lacking it. That was mighty childish. You deserve, come on now. That was ridiculous. Uh, another thing I was gonna bring up, the fact that Faust created the admin position instead of, uh, letting the EDI committee bring it forward, and then speaking about the budgetary constraints that we have, which now we know, what, triple-digit jobs potentially on the line? That should have occurred. That conversation should have occurred before that was created. Lastly, I've never approached y'all that I've had issues with outside of this board meeting. I've never showed up to your house. I don't approach you when I see you at a grocery store. So for Mr. Bowler to show up to the election, where I'm out there electioneering, and walk up and start heckling me, talking about, oh, you're Mr. "Oh, you're Mr. Constitutional Master, right? Tell me what amendment this was, right?" You and I had a long conversation then. I brought up the fact that Rocky Jeter Webb, you sat there and didn't say anything. You didn't call a point of order. You didn't take up for it. And what did you say? "It's not my job to control the meeting." And then what did I tell you? Yes, it is. She might be controlling decorum, but you are supposed to call a point of order. And considering what you teach at a collegiate level, you should have known better. And then you said, "I didn't know what was going on." So my last... With my last 10 seconds, I would like to request y'all please get more parliamentary training, because that's ridiculous. And the fact that you looked at me and said, "Well, you still have the courts." I should not have to go to the courts to have my constitutional rights honored. Thank you.
Before I call up the next speaker, I would like to go back to a comment that we said in our written rules of decorum that... Let me find it. Speakers can offer comments and criticism directed at substantive ideas, actions, and procedures of the board and individual board members, but in the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, speakers are to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at the board, individual board members, staff, or members of the general public. Next up is Alicia Ogundeli.
I'd like to speak on the seclusion rules. Okay. Good evening. Actually, these are the data I have collected from Ms. Varnum. There's two elementary schools, six middle schools, eight high schools. Based on data from Ms. Varnum presented in May, that is how many schools will not be participated by... impacted by the change in the school seclusion policy. Thirty-five schools will not be impacted by the change because only had one less student per... put in the padded closet during the first seven months or in the past year. So how many schools might need extra support during the coming year? Just one high school. It has two seclusion rooms. One middle school. It has five seclusion rooms. And eight elementary schools have five, which have already had Behavior Leadership Foundation, PLC, the past year. Remember how that training drastically reduced out-of-school suspension? So stop making excuses about the need for the culture shift or buy-in from the staff. Use the coming year to help a handful of schools with positive alternatives to seclusion. Just to be clear, if any of you were to lock a child in a padded closet in your home, someone will call Child Protective Services on you. Vote to change Policy 4302-R and end school seclusions by 2023 and 2024 school year. Thank you for pretending to listen.
Okay, next up is Mahaleni Cooper.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Love Our Children for Policy 4302-R to end seclusions for the 2023-2024 calendar. I want to talk a little bit about the pipeline to prison that does refer to school discipline policies and practices that remove students from learning opportunities. So anytime a child is placed in a seclusion room, they are automatically being put through this system that is stopping them from learning. Seclusion, the definition of seclusion is the state of being private and away from other people. And we all experienced a pandemic here where all of us had to be isolated. And we know the effects that it had on the world. A lot of people grew into great depressions, and they were adults with fully-equipped minds having grown. We're dealing with children who don't get it. And we're also secluding children at this time who are still getting adjusted to returning back to school. And after being isolated from the world, now they're going right back into school with the same isolation. I brought this shoebox in just as an example of being shut away from the world. And this is what happens to our children when they go into seclusion rooms. They're locked away from everything. There has to be a better way. There has to be a listening ear here on this paddle to make a right decision and to save a child's life and to prevent them from going through the prison to pipeline, school system. Make some sense. You're here for a purpose. Do something right.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Your time is up. Pat Bradford?
Good evening. I have a literary reading. This is from one of the nine books that the New Hanover County Sheriff's Department investigated and forwarded to the New Hanover County District Attorney's Office for a ruling if any laws had been broken. And neither the Sheriff's Department or the district attorney refuted that the books were obscene or inappropriate for K through 12. From "All Boys Aren't Blue." A boy is recounting his firsthand experience. "You then asked me, 'Do you feel that?' 'Yeah,' but I laughed and said, 'Get your hand off my butt.' You giggled. 'That's not my hand.' 'You're lying,' I said. You then placed both hands on my hips as we lay side by side. There was still something poking me. You were fully erect at this point. I was nervous. We're gonna get in trouble. You can't tell anybody, okay,' you said. You promised that you're not gonna tell anyone. I promised." I have to skip over the part that's so sexually graphic because I can't say it in this meeting. Later in the text, it says this. "The whole time, I knew it was wrong, not because I was having sexual intercourse with a guy, but that you were in my family." These boys are cousins in the story, and this is incest. And this book is found, was found, in Ashley High School. Now, PavementEducationProject.com has 10 such books found at the Ashley High School, five at New Hanover, seven at Laney, two at Hoggard. Here's where it gets really disturbing. One is found at Blair Elementary, one at Bellamy, one at Ogden, one at Porter's Neck, one at Snipes, one at Holly Shelter, two at Murray, one at Middle Grove, two at Roland Greys, two at Williston, and one at Gregory. You have the power to change the policy that allow these books into our schools and our school libraries.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Your time is up. Sandy Iles?
Are you tired of seeing me yet? I'm tired of being here. Eighteen months, I've asked you to stop secluding tiny children. At first, you ignored me. You probably thought I'd just go away, but I'm still here. I'm no longer the lone speaker on seclusion restraint. Tonight, like the past few months, we have many people here to speak, asking you to end the use of seclusion beginning the 2023-2024 school year. The community is united on this. We're not united on much, so every issue seems to be polarized, but not seclusion. We don't want our children locked in rooms, black, white, young, old, Republican, Democrat. Nobody wants this in our schools. And yet, the only reason it still happens is because of you. Because you have not changed the policy. You have not set the expectation that children in New Hanover County schools will not be locked in padded rooms. We want solutions. We want practices that allow our children to learn. We want staffing so that our children can be supported and taught skills so that they can thrive and excel in school. We want our children, particularly our children with disabilities, to be treated as human beings, to be included in the classroom and respected by their teachers and peers. As parents, we want to be believed in IEP meetings when we bring concerns to the district. We don't want IEPs that dehumanize or blame our children or ones that rely on abusive and traumatic practices like seclusion, which only deny our children the right to learn. We want our children to be seen and understood. We don't want our children locked in rooms and treated as animals. The community is united on this. So why isn't the board? The community wants you to act with urgency, so why haven't you? What are you waiting for? Change the policy. End seclusion. Do what we elected you to do. Thank you.
Tracy Bannon?
Hi, my name is Tracy Bannon, and I'm here this evening to speak about the Constitution Day holiday. September 17th is designated as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate the signing of the United States Constitution in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on September 17, 1787. Both Constitution Day and Citizenship Day were merged to form one holiday. Citizenship Day was moved from May to coincide with Constitution Day on September 17. The purpose of Constitution Day holiday is to commemorate the creation and signing of the supreme law of our great nation as written by our founding fathers and to honor and celebrate the privileges and responsibilities for both native-born and naturalized United States citizens. The law establishing Constitution Day holiday was created in 2004 with the passage of an amendment by the late Senator of the great state of West Virginia, Robert Byrd, to the omnibus spending bill 2004. I have given this brief history to ask if you are aware there is a constitutional mandate attached to this 2004 omnibus spending bill. Congress mandated all schools receiving federal funding provide education about the Constitution on Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September 17th each year, from K through 12. We have researched and found while some schools in New Hanover County do use the curriculum, some do not. How may I and many others like me assist in New Hanover County becoming compliant 100% with the omnibus spending bill 2004 mandate? My goal is for each federally-funded student in New Hanover County to be given a copy of the Constitution of the United States of America and to teach it in the context as written by our founding fathers almost 235 years ago. The United States Constitution is not an antiquated piece of parchment paper. It is one of the most amazing documents on earth.
Thank you, Ms. Bannon. Your time is up. Erin Cogan? Erin Cogan? Melissa Mason?
Good evening. Enviamos a nuestros hijos a la escuela para ser educados, no adentrados. I'm Melissa Mason. Superintendent Faust's administration continues to push the systematic hypersexualization of our kids and a grooming agenda on this community. That is what the word "inclusive" represents in Policy 3540. We, the parents, categorically reject these policies. But Dr. Faust and the powers that be have contempt for community values. They have consistently ignored, excluded, deceived, and obstructed concerned parents. Concerned parents took nine books to the sheriff, but the DA says state law prevents prosecuting school employees for giving harmful material to kids. As long as it's part of your job, you can show porn to kids. It's protected by the First Amendment. This is an absurd lie, obviously, which the DA tells us because he thinks we're too stupid to actually look it up. You can find out more what he's lying about in my blog, but really, we're tired of the DA and the sheriff and the schools covering up abuse. Why do we have to go to law enforcement to resolve these issues? How many more obscene books are there? Why are parents being required to opt out of a curriculum that doesn't reflect community values and no one knows about? State law requires sex ed materials to be made available to parents. One open house, where parents are allowed to review the materials but not take them home, does not satisfy that requirement. In fact, these materials have been hidden. I challenge anyone in this room to try and find those online, because I did some digging, a lot, and I could not. Superintendent Faust, this puts you in violation of state law, another in a long list of fireable offenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Now, I hope everybody's doing well. I'm here to talk about seclusion rooms. It seems to be the topic of choice. First of all, Ms. Varnum, I want to tell you how much I appreciate all the work that you're doing and the incremental stages that you're taking. I think you're doing very thought-provocative, focused changes on it. But even in school improvement team plans, you have to have a target date. Every objective had to have a target date. So it's been a year and a half since we've been here asking you to change your policies. We've been working with you. The community has made that clear. I'm asking you to take action to end the use of seclusion rooms in our schools. You have the power to do it. You have the power to do it to now. I'm asking you to vote at the end of the... to end seclusion rooms in all schools with a target date of implementation of July 1, 2023, at your August 2, 2022 meeting. You can do it. You can take the vote to end it. Then put 11 months into changing your policies, changing your procedures, implementing your training, fiscally responsible support for the support staff so they get that training. And then you have IEP time adjustment. 11 months, you can do it so that you're ready to roll out with the changes July 1 of 2023. That should be your target date. But you need to vote on it because you can't change culture if you don't set expectations. We had expectations to have our target dates when we had our school improvement plans. And if we didn't meet them, that went into our evaluation. You can do it. It's enough suffering for children. I've worked in the school system over 20 years. I see what seclusion rooms do. They're traumatic, and they are not therapeutic. Make the change. Thank you. And by the way, my library taught Constitution every September 17.
Ms. Anderson, your time is up. Thank you. Driftin Jalinas? Driftin Jalinas? Leslie Posey?
Good evening. Tonight, I want to talk about repetition. Repetition can be a really good tool for learning some things. When I took square dancing lessons, our instructor told us we would have to repeat the movements at least 400 times for our feet to really learn them. And he was right. Square dancing is complicated. Repetition is also good for things like music. Bands, orchestra, chorus do a lot of repetition in preparing for concerts. I've sung Hamilton in my kitchen so many times, I could probably sing you most of the play, but I don't have Peter's voice. Some repetition gets tiring. I'm sure you are all getting tired of repeatedly hearing speakers to ask you to end the use of seclusion rooms. You've heard more tonight. Research shows that seclusion rooms harm children, that they have no positive effects. Training and plans for training are in place. Tonight, you can instruct the policy committee to write a policy to end the use of seclusion rooms starting in the 2023-2024 school year. I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Tellis?
Good afternoon. Sorry about earlier. Notifications are one thing, but media is another. So there's a lot of hypocrisy that knows no bounds in this room today, and it emanates like a rotten stench from the dais from before me. Last month, this meeting, in this meeting, I witnessed a concerned citizen being censored for the act of reading from a book that certain members of this hypocritical body felt was too explicit and violated their adult contemporary community standards. Remember those words. The said book was declared by the New Hanover County District Attorney, Ben David, to be protected by the First Amendment. I do not agree with your handling of that hypocritical situation last month nor with the DA's assessment of the book in question. The key phrase in all this, adult contemporary community standards. Okay? Coming off of North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash nineteen point one five subsection C two, which explicitly exempts parent schools, libraries, and other governmental and agencies from its purview, according to Ben David, those, his office found the law prevents schools and their employees from being charged under the statute, assuming that the materials were disseminated as a legitimate function of employment within the school system. Well, there we have the real problem. You see, disseminating pornography in the schools is not a legitimate function of employment within the school system. The material lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for school children. Ben David just gaslighted the entire populace with his words declaring pornography for children of First Amendment liberty. That, I'm like, okay, you know what it is. You know what it is. I was a criminal paralegal for several years, and I know crime.
Mr. Tellis, your time is up. Thank you. Earl Grover. Earl Grover. I think, are you Mr. Grover? Okay. He's trying to make his way to the front. I think somebody might be in his way.
I'm here to speak on this ridiculousness of certain members of this board for saying with the left side of your mouth that a man cannot read at a podium from a pornographic book that is currently in the district schools because it's too explicit, and then with the other left side of your mouth that those books are okay for elementary and middle sound, middle school children to read. I pulled my grandson out of elementary school because that was one of the reasons. Even high schoolers should be reading non-sexualized material anyway. At the end of the day, you all know as adults what a, as it was already mentioned, quote, contemporary, I mean, a contemporary community standard, unquote, of behavior is. So I'm here to ask you that you stop the hypocrisy and stop the porn from being so readily available in the schools. Only a small percentage of the population wants to sexualize the children. These are bad people. These are bad people. Don't enable bad people. Pedophilia is our bad people. Sexualizing children is pedophilia. Supplying pornographic material to school children in the course of a regular school activities is not legitimate literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for the students. It's pedophilia. It's just that simple. You all are complicit to these actions if you don't do something about it tonight. Last month, I got up here and spoke, and I asked Stephanie Crable to step down. If she doesn't do something, she needs to step down today, tonight, before I leave this place. You need to step down. And you can sit behind it with the smirky smiles.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Your time is up. Next.
My name is Matt Rhodes, and I want to talk about some of the issues of school safety in New Hanover County. I know that that's a topic on every parent's mind right now all around the country for all of the mass shootings we've seen, but I'm not talking about that. What I'm talking about is the twenty years that we've had in New Hanover County of sexual assault at the hand of teachers and staff of the New Hanover County School System. Right now, there is a trial going on, a civil trial, against the Board of Education in regards to Michael Kelly, who sexually assaulted students from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty nineteen. For twenty years, this should have never happened in the first place. But what's happening now is the lawyer is trying to say that it is not the responsibility of the school system to protect children. That is completely absurd. Parents in this county dropped their children off at all forty-five public schools, irregardless of age, sex, race, if you're rich, you're poor, or you're the working poor that we have here, and they trust you. They trust the school system, and they've been let down. Here's how bad this is. The Attorney General for North Carolina, Josh Stein, and it was on the front page of the paper today, is investigating this, and he said this man posed a real threat. We also have a documentary filmmaker, Carrie David, who is working on a film called Open Secret. It's only about New Hanover County and the sexual assaults that have gone on. These children need to be protected. The first priority of the school system is not education, but the safety of the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Sue juries. Sue juries.
All right, I'm talking to the parents who know the government schools are corrupt. Take your children out of these schools. Homeschool your children. Public schools are doing exactly what they were designed to do. Indoctrinate, groom, and brainwash your kids. There is no fixing government schools. Two years, parents have been fighting back. They still teach your kids to hate their skin. They still teach kids to hate their country. They still push that, put them in restraints and use seclusion rooms. They're still giving kids porn. The DA said there's nothing he can do about it, so what are you going to do about it? They're still pushing pedophilia children? They're letting perverts get away with molesting your children? Well, it's time for you to do something about it. Pedophiles are using government schools to sexualize your children. Kids have been vaccinated without consent in certain schools? What are you waiting for? Enough with the excuses. There are members of the community who will help you homeschool your children. They've been doing it for years. We've had members who have taken their kids out of the school system within just the last two years. They can help you get started and guide you in what to do. Go to twocitizensmoms.com. And if you like my shirt, take a picture of my shirt and I'll send you one.
The district recently released a statement in support of LGBTQ staff and students. Based on some of the comments and the recent disruption at the Library Pride Storytime event, this is long overdue. Years ago, we received valuable information through a ten million dollar Safe Schools grant that outlined ways to improve structural design and the inner workings of our schools with regard to SEL and prevention. The grant data has now been misplaced, similar to the mysterious disappearance of years' worth of ignored sexual assault complaints. How does New Hanover County Schools continuously and conveniently lose documentation? The Title IX survey provided more safety data reflecting the dire straits of our LGBTQ plus students and sexual assault victims. The county denies that their negligence put families at risk at a public library event, while the school board puts victims of sexual assault through traumatic psychological evaluations in an attempt to exhaust them and cover up crimes. After over four years, the civil suit against New Hanover County Schools will likely be pushed back further. While we wait for excuses and deflection, lives are at risk. Suicide has taken lives with regard to both sexual assault and LGBTQ harassment. If the public wants to be outraged, channel your anger into supporting victims of sexual assault and refrain from confusing the situation with blatant lies. If this board truly wants to do what's right for children, acknowledge the past transgressions and put an end to the gross tactics of your litigation team in torturing brave survivors of school predators. Implement policy to empower and protect all students. Use your seat at the table to do good work or risk losing it to someone far more dangerous. How ironic that a year ago, the superintendent and former board chair filed charges against myself and another advocate for simply seeking accountability and safety as we do today. You fear involved community activists, but those that attack young children for reading a story about same-sex parents and those who protect pedophiles don't seem to scare you at all.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. Neil Case. Is Neil Case in the room? Huh? Okay, it was mistyped on here. Sorry.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? How many people in the room know the definition, the actual proper definition of the word mitzvah? Anyone? Mitzvah. It's Hebrew? Beulah? No? All right, great. Well, there's a book here called Me, an Earl, and the Dying Girl. And pursuant to this text, even though it's fiction, not a very good example of it, the only dying I'm interested in is Faulkner. I'm about to lay doing such because this book is hot trash. Mitzvah is Hebrew for colossal pain in the ass. That's actually not the definition of the word mitzvah. How do I know? Well, for one, I have Jewish ancestors. I'm not a practicing Jew myself, but my ancestors were, in particular, Isaac Bear. You may be familiar with the Isaac Bear Early College, founded by my ancestor. The actual definition of mitzvah is a good deed done from religious duty. I wonder what the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation has to say about that, since they've given in excess of a hundred and twenty-four million dollars across all fifty states in the Union to prop up these early college preparatory schools, including but not limited to the Isaac Bear Early College. So help me understand, overstand, and understand why books like this, you guys think it's funny? You know what else is in here? The N-word, over and over and over again, but if I say it, I'll be escorted out of here. Why is that? Get it together. And also, too, your seclusion rooms? They're corny. You need to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Case. Christina Merzian.
Tonight, I want to talk about our LGBTQIA youth and suspensions. No matter my position over my career, I always accepted students as they were and expected the same from my class while they were in my room. At the very least, they were to adhere to the idea that if you have nothing nice to say, remain quiet. However, I know that once the students left my room, I could not control everything that happened to them. Sadly, not only were they potentially targeted by their peers, but also by other teachers and adults. It's obvious that education is needed in regards to LGBTQIA youth for both adults and students. I'm frustrated by some of the beliefs students have expressed, but I am horrified when adults in positions of power not only share the same outdated beliefs, but also express and reinforce them to a younger generation. I worked for the last quarter of my career at an alternative school, dealing mostly with students who had been suspended. I cannot tell you how many times a student who got in a fight told me they did so because that boy is gay or some similar reason. Often, they would go on to tell me the other child didn't actually do anything to provoke the fight except apparently to exist as their authentic self. The instigator chose to provoke the fight due to the belief that a gay person is a predator, and they were letting them know ahead of time not to mess with them. Conversely, I've also had LGBTQIA students who had gotten suspended for fighting. It was rare for the student to have actually started the fight, but they were sick of being bullied and picked on and decided to fight back. Ultimately, if a student got in enough fights, they were recommended to attend the alternative school long term, and more often, it was the LGBTQIA student who was referred versus the bully, using the idea that the smaller environment was safer. While this is likely true, the bigger question is why punish the victim of the crime? Why can't the school system educate staff and students on how to simply accept others as they are? There are many ways that people are different, and, you know, it's a legal-protected class in the United States. We need to do a better job because the students deserve it. Thank you.
M.T. Lincoln. M.T. Lincoln. M.T. Lincoln. Okay. Has Yolanda Hernandez come in? Okay. Has Erin Cogan come in? Okay. Has Driftin' Halinas come in? Okay. That concludes our call to the audience. So next up on our agenda is closed session. Do I hear a motion? Could you get that? Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the statutes listed on your screen?
Move closed session pursuant to the statutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilderborg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Okay, we are in closed session.
Board members. Okay, we are back. I need to make a motion to change our agenda to include a second closed session at the after new business pursuant to the reasons stated for the first closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we will add closed session after it'll be item number sixteen after new business. Okay, so next up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So moved, moved to approve.
Are you moving to approve all four or are you moving to approve one at a time?
Moved to approve, the minutes is written.
All four? All four?
Yes.
Second.
Second, okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes, all four minutes as presented are approved. Next on our agenda is our consensus items. Do I hear a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve, Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Adams, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, all those items are passed. Next up on our agenda is old business fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget resolution. Ms. Sutton.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I bring before you included in your board packet is budget resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And this information is provided to you includes the beginning budgets for the state public school fund, local current expense, capital outlay fund, enterprise fund. And this resolution was developed using the plan that was shared with the budget at the last board meeting. The revenue estimates for this budget were based on the county appropriate appropriation we received, state planning allotments we had at that point in time along with other current funding levels of other reoccurring revenue sources. Resolution includes the raise of two point five percent or the fifteen dollar minimum pay hourly compensation. At this time, I'm requesting your approval of the resolution as presented.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Ms. Sutton? Ms. Walker, I'm sorry, Ms. Justice?
The two ninety-nine, is this is above the, is this in addition to already the budget we were talking about previously?
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Is it two, I'm sorry, I forgot about the microphone. Is the two hundred ninety-nine million, is that is in addition to the, to the state allotment?
So this includes the state allotment, but based on the planning numbers that we received. As Dr. Faust had mentioned, the state budget was passed yesterday. And so that, those numbers are gonna change. So I will be bringing back a budget amendment that will put us in line with what the state budget was that passed yesterday. So I will bring that at another board meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that's, yes, so this, so this is a temporary on top of, okay.
This was based on the planning numbers we had at that point in time, we were working on the budget.
Ms. Adams?
I just would like to move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget resolution as presented by Ms. Sutton.
Second.
Second, okay, so is there any more discussion? Okay, Mr. Clark, would you call the roll? Let's just make sure we have this.
Ms. Justice?
I'm not changing how I feel before, no.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabore?
Yes.
Mr. Bullier?
Yes.
And Ms. Craybill?
Yes. Okay, so that passes, resolution passes five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Okay, so next up on our agenda is policy thirty-four hundred, evaluation of student progress. Ms. Barnum. Actually, you know what, is this supposed, this is one we've already approved, right?
No.
Through policy.
You have, this has moved through policy.
Okay.
This has not been shared with the full board with the language.
Okay, right, yeah, so, okay, so just been through policy for coming to us first, okay.
Yes, yes.
Sorry about that.
And, and Dr. Facen is coming in with the second part.
Okay.
With the regulations.
Yes, just so everybody knows, the, this was kind of like a little bit of a confused, not confusing, but this is a two-parter.
Yes.
And one cannot go without the other.
Right.
Yeah, the evaluation of student progress, AKA grading.
There we go. Yes, AKA grading. And, and again, I want to echo the thanks to the grading practices committee that came together. Thank you for our board member representatives on there, Mr. McManus, Mr. Wildabore. Thank you, Ms. Craybill, for coming to one of them and helping, seeing us round it out. As you will see, the language, the recommended language for policy thirty-four hundred is up on the screen. I also want to, and I know Dr. Facen is going to mention this, I want to also echo the thanks to the team of teachers and other folks who looked at this again and again with us. Our committee was made up of administrators, students, teachers, parents, community members, and also some of our community providers. And so this, this work has, has really come from many different angles with lots of input, lots and lots of input. As you will see, this is really focusing on an evaluation system of students' effort, growth, and academic performance. Of course, I'm not gonna read all the lines, but I want to highlight that in the fourth paragraph, "Teachers shall evaluate student performance in a timely manner, provide appropriate feedback to parents. Teachers shall allow students who are failing a course opportunities for intervention and support to demonstrate mastery and improve their grade." You are gonna hear more from Dr. Facen on how that looks. Again, at the, before we get into the performance codes, the last of the fourth paragraph, "Students and parents have the right to appeal failing course grades, and the standardized grading practices procedures and grievance processes shall be utilized in accordance with thirty-four hundred R that you'll be seeing." And then if we can scroll to the grading scale for three twelve, there we go. We have in here interim grades or quarterly. I have to choose whether I'm looking at this one or that one. We are still on a ten-point scale, looking at quarterly again for grades three twelve. And at quarterly, you can see that a student that receives an F, that is a fifty, or there's an incomplete to be lower for a grade lower than a fifty. Final grades for semester or yearly depending upon whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. Final grades, the F can be a zero to fifty-nine, and then incomplete for specified circumstances. The rationale behind this, and you can see that the previous grading scale is redlined, the rationale behind this is students with, that are operating through in the midst of their coursework will maintain an opportunity to recover, but they will also work under behavior contracts as you're gonna hear more. For final grades, their earning is their earning, given that they've had every opportunity to recover the grade and maximize their growth. And unless you have any questions.
So does anybody have, Mr. McManus?
Yeah, there's documentation involving the parents so that there's no lack of contact.
We're gonna hear about that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So I don't know if you want to operate on these separately or here and then come back.
Come back and do the voting that needs to do, thank you.
All right, so as Julie said, I wanna thank the teachers. I think, I can comfortably say that we have spoken to about a hundred to a hundred and five, hundred to a hundred and twenty-five teachers, and they were liaisons for their schools, every principal, and most of our assistant principals on this work. And I really thank them for their work because this is ours. That's the biggest thing I want you to know is this is the teacher's work, the principal's work, so this is a team effort. So right now, I'm gonna direct you to, we're gonna start with high school. And as you begin to look at high school, the big-
Which one are you, are you putting up?
High school, semester, I'm sorry, semester. So some of the biggest changes, and I'm gonna outline this, some of the biggest changes you're gonna note is the students will receive the grade they've earned. So if Patrice receives a twenty-five, she gets a twenty-five. If she earns an eighty-five, she gets an eighty-five. The grade that I earn is the grade that my teacher will record in the grade book. Also, the documentation piece that Mr. McManus just discussed. If students are failing a course, they are going to receive, their parents will be notified, and the teacher will work with the student and the parent to create an academic contract, and I will share that with you a little later. The three of them will work together to help the student gain a greater understanding of the missed skills and to improve their academic performance. At the end of quarter one and quarter three, and I want you to note that we've broken those out, and I'll explain why in just a minute. At the end of that quarter, the student can then get the grade that they have now earned from the academic contract doing those missing assignments or working with the teacher. Or if their grade is lower than a fifty, they will get their F, but it will be recorded as a fifty for the semester grade for quarter one and quarter three. For quarter two and quarter four, the same thing, well, their student will still get the grade that they've earned. If I earn this grade, I, this grade is recorded. If the student is failing again, if they're failing the course, the parents will be notified. The biggest difference here is there is not an incomplete put in for the student to have an academic contract that's in place, and I apologize, I forgot to say that part. On quarter one and quarter three, there is an academic contract that is put in place for the teacher and the parent and the students to work on to help that student improve that grade. And the latter part in quarters two and four, there is no incomplete, nor is there a grade floor. The student will get the grade that they've earned. I can tell you that the teachers really stress that this is what we've done before, this is what we've always done. Most of you have been around education long enough to know that you don't wanna shut the door of a student. So if they fail that quarter or the beginning half of the year, you've given them no hope. And the teachers are already saying, this is what we've done, we just wanna go back to it. So this is why this has been received with a lot of positive energy, I'll say. So that is the semester for high school. Then when you look at, and if we had a semester course in middle school, it would serve there as well. Then when you look at the secondary year long, we're doing the same thing, but this time, they wanted to make sure, and when I say they, I'm talking about the team that we were working with, is for the semester, we're doing half the course. So for the year, we do half the course for the consistency. So here you see is quarter one and quarter two, where the academic contract has to be put in place and the incomplete. There's a couple things that the principals and the teachers wanted. They wanted to make sure that documentation was there. And after that documentation is signed is when the two-week clock. So we wanna make sure we partner with parents on this. So that's the same thing with the secondary. It's the same thing as what I just shared with the semester. The only difference is, it's the first half of the school year that the incomplete is put in, those two quarters, and then the second half, that safety net is gone. Elementary felt, we're the foundation. We've gotta look a little different. So elementary wanted to do the grade floor throughout, and they wanted to put in intervention plans. Because they felt like your elementary child, the teacher is gonna really have to do that support and step in. When we think about a middle school student, a high school student, they're a little bit more responsible. So the elementary principals felt adamant, we've gotta intervene 'cause if we don't catch this, this is just snowballing. So you'll notice that that looks the same throughout. Besides, on the last quarter, there is no incomplete because the teachers have to record the grade. But they still wanted the grade floor because of the intervention plans and the growth that they are gonna see. And next, I'm gonna take you to the academic contract that we've been referencing. I think it's important to note, that you will note with the academic contract is there is a place for student responsibility and teacher responsibility. And these two places make it so both have wholesome accountability. And the teachers can record some of the things that they've already done because we know our teachers do a number of things before our students get here, okay? And you'll see that there is a requirement for student, parent, and teacher signature. And I also want you to note, if you cannot reach the parent, their next steps. So we're not just saying we can't, we couldn't reach this parent. So then we're gonna reach to our support services, our school counselors, our social worker. And lastly, if we need to, we'll get the administrators involved. We felt it important to make sure we do everything and show that partnership. And if you click on the sample strategies, if the teachers were to click on that, and I'm gonna show you this, this is, these are just some strategies, the next form. These are just strategies that we thought of in the instruction and accountability team that teachers already use. There, this is not meant to be exhaustive by any means, but we wanted to give our teachers some ideas. The goal was anytime we can take work away from teachers, we're gonna do that. So I, I just wanna say, I have been very pleased in coming new to the district. I have found it truly to be a privilege to work with teachers who want to go the extra mile. And that's why they insisted on the way we do this. And I just, I, I think our teachers have really spoken with this. And I'm very proud to say I've worked with them. And I'm just gonna say this, Mrs. Dali, Mrs. Bierstad, and Mrs. Branch, we've been hand in hand with it, they've been pulling, they pulled together so many people because they're veterans in the district, and they brought in so many teachers to allow us to do this work. So I will take questions.
Ms. Wildabore?
Well, this isn't a question for the statement, I think this is exceptionally well done. You and I talked about it, and every question I came up with, you answered it. So I really appreciate, both of y'all, you do an excellent job. So I think, you know, it may not be perfect, but if it's not, we'll continue working on it. But I think you guys did a great, great job, so I wanna thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
So I just wanna say, from the people that were on there, the board members, do y'all, you feel satisfied that this is definitely different than what we had before, which was accountability, which was follow-up, which was not just letting students just take the fifty and not come to school?
Right, yeah, this just gives them an opportunity to, as Mr. McManus said, to go through and look at, you know, and talk to the parent and get people involved. And I, I mean, I even, I didn't see that last piece until just now, but, you know, where the, if we can't get up with the parent, what do we do? We just don't just drop it and say, good luck, we have other steps in place, which is awesome.
And these are the things that our teachers are doing anyway, right? So the majority of our teachers are doing this. Of course, you know, in every, you know, you have some that we have to remind these are. So these are the teachers, things that our teachers are doing, so.
Ms. Judy was next.
Well, this is so familiar. This is what we've been doing for decades, that's what I used to do in the nineties. So, and, and that's what we recommended doing then. So basically, you know, if you're taking like a semester course, you're midway through. The incomplete's that fifty, it gives you the chance to pull yourself back together.
Exactly.
Working with the parents, and honestly, that's gonna be a hard pull. Please, you know, we're trying to get the parents involved, that's gonna make the whole world a difference. So I mean, what I see is what works, and we've known it for decades, and I'm glad to see we're going back to it. I'm not sure what happened, but I'm glad that it's actually gonna put something in place that we know works.
Ms. McManus?
Well, I know I was the heartburner in this whole thing, but I'm really impressed. I happened to walk in accidentally, I was turning another meeting, y'all were having a meeting here, so I kinda hung around. I think it's most important that the teachers and the principal, 'cause I've listened to them along with your guidance, both of you, this is what they wanted, and they supported. And so it includes accountability, it includes all the stakeholders, particularly the parents, and the student has responsibility, and they have chances to make that work out. So I really, really, really thank you. The only thing I see missing is attendance.
She's got that coming.
Okay, so, Ms. Bulleye, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, sure, I'd add my thanks to my fellow board members, to our staff, and I would ask that we adopt policy thirty-four hundred and thirty-four R attachments as amended before this board.
Second.
We want to do them both at the same time, is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion?
May I just, a clarification, this is going in the policy manual.
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
And the only thing that's different from what we normally do, thirty-four hundred has already been through policy, we approved it, moved it on, but they felt that thirty-four oh, thirty-four hundred R was necessary in order to make us, so this is one that the policy committee has not seen. It's first to us with that, so, just so we're all clear, but it sounds like, you know, they've done a really good job in setting that up. All right, so, Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wildabour?
Aye.
Mr. Bulleye?
Aye.
And Ms. Crago?
Aye. Okay, so that passes seven to two, I mean, seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your work, folks. This has been awesome, yeah.
She got excited.
Okay, so, next up on our agenda is, Mr. Bulleye, policy forty-four hundred, attendance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this is another one we've been dealing with since COVID, and I think we are ready to bring forward this policy. It went through our policy committee, and I will turn it over to Ms. Barnum, and thank you very much.
Do you want me to go through some highlights of this?
Go through the highlight reel, please.
Yeah, please.
Okay. The, the main part of the change in forty-four hundred, we'll move to the red line, which is section E.
There's not much red, there's a lot of blue.
Okay, so, so.
Is the blue supposed to be red?
That, that's okay, my copy is red, but as long as it is lined, that's all that matters. So we'll go with the blue line?
We're just making sure we're reading the same thing.
Yeah, okay. All good, how, not, okay. All, all good. So instead of having section E as makeup work, you can still see, yes, you can still see the lining of the document. This section goes into elementary and middle school requirements with regard to attendance. The main focus here is, we, we also know that a principal or designee can request a conference regarding attendance at any time, where attendance becomes a concern to them. But specifically, we know that chronically absent students are absent ten percent or more of the school year, so we have to really focus on keeping our students from being chronically absent. That has a detrimental effect on their academic performance. We also know that we have options within, for any academic or attendance interventions through multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS process, or framework. It's not really a process, it's a framework. We also know that, consistent with our practices, continued absenteeism can result in notify, notification to Department of Social Services, Juvenile Court, or District Attorney's Office through, if we find that our families aren't cooperating with our attendance requirements, and that's consistent with general statute compulsory attendance law. While we know that compulsory attendance doesn't address arriving late or early dismissal, we know that those needs, or, or any excess of tardiness, or not having timely, consistent attendance can also be handled through our MTSS process. Now, our high school requirements. Again, we understand that we are focusing on having our students with us more than ninety percent of the school year, because ten percent chronically absenteeism is, is certainly the, the mark for us. Here's our procedure for high school, and this is under number two. Yep, following procedure will be implemented each semester. We have a process for first and second absence. Makeup work is assigned as deemed appropriate. All makeup work is completed within a reasonable amount of time. Then we go to third through tenth absence. Again, makeup work is assigned as deemed appropriate, reasonable amount of time. If absences are consecutive, we need to be looking into why that student is absent and what support they might need. Maybe there's a health condition, or some other type of need the student or family is having. Parents are notified after the third, sixth, and tenth absences, again, consistent with compulsory attendance law. Now, here's the part that's really important. Again, utilized our team of teachers and administrators to be, to provide input on this, to give us their guidance, their, their feedback, their input. Eleventh absence for grades nine through twelve, for a student who misses more than ten days in a semester, shall not be awarded course credit, except by determination of the principal or designee. But that is only upon careful review of the student's records, with a panel of individuals that include that student, their parent or guardians, the teacher of the course, or if it's multiple courses, the teachers of the courses, and any other appropriate support staff, such as an exceptional children's chairperson, or multi-tiered systems of support coordinator. So anybody else that is helping with wraparound supports for that student needs to be involved in that discussion. So keeping in mind, until that panel meets, that student shall not be awarded credit, but then that principal and team, or principal or designee or team are going to come together. When total absences, lawful or unlawful, exceed ten per semester, further documentation may be, will be required. And again, we want to make sure that we're offering incentives for perfect attendance as well. But as you can see, that, that part on makeup assignments has been included in the prior So I want to make sure I say, a team of teachers have provided specific feedback, and Student Support Services will continue to provide guidance regarding implementation at the school level. So I don't know if you have any questions or comments?
Anybody, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, for the absences, it says here that ten days, you're going to have a panel convened. What if they're excused absences? I mean, honestly, I've had sick children before, they were legitimately sick. Why, you know, why do we, if they make up their work, why do we have to have a, I'm just asking. Why was determined that we should have a panel put together if it's legitimately excused and the child's made up their work?
So it was determined that the panel still needs to come together to make sure that there's not any missing supports needed for that student. So it doesn't necessarily mean that, that there's going to have to be new information provided, but the team did determine that our recommendation was that panel still needs to come together, because that student missed valuable instructional time in the classroom. They may not have another option, but the team needs to come together to determine if there are any missing resources for that student and family, given that they have situations causing them to be absent that much. It was really a support structure at that point.
Okay, all right, and, and I mean, that's really valid, is just having taught high school students in regular times and knowing illnesses.
Yeah.
Work.
Any other comments, questions? Hey, Mr. Bulleye?
Oh, yeah, I just asked for a recommendation to, or a motion to adopt the policy.
Adopting policy forty-four hundred attendance.
Second.
Second by Mr. McManus. Any more discussion? Okay, Mr. Clark, oh, Ms. Justice?
I, honestly, I'm just, who makes up this panel? Because I, I'm just concerned about extra work, when you've got, I'm just going to use this as an example. Say you've got a child legitimately, say they have, I don't know, chronic asthma or something like that, and they constantly do work, and they're not behind, but you're still going to have a panel of ten people come in, that's going to be taking valuable time from, they're already doing ten thousand things. That just, I'm, I'm just trying to understand why that needs to happen if the parents have already been notified and everybody's working together. I know that you're talking about supports, but there's, I think there's probably quite a few positions, situations like that, just from having worked with kids with chronic illnesses. Go ahead.
Did you want to jump in on an answer?
I, I want to try to figure out which part of that to answer.
Okay.
In the determination of who makes up the, the panel, of course, it's the student, the parent, teacher, and any other appropriate support staff, along with the administrator. For a student who has maybe an individualized health plan, they already have a medical condition, if that student is missing that, that instructional time, I, I will say that the team discussed, really, that it would be still beneficial to have that team come together and determine if there was any additional resource that could be identified to support them. And, and maybe curb some of the absences, even if they were determined necessary, but maybe some accommodations can be put in place to allow the student to be in attendance more. Maybe not, some things are absolutely out of everybody's control. But this was the recommendation of the panel, but it was just these folks.
Mr. McManus?
I was just going to say, I, I really like, like this, and really, really appreciate it, because I think it has accountability and expectations, and the teachers and the principals, again, they all make you work, because it was their input. And to answer your question about, like, is every child, no one would be, I want to say, well, they, you know, they've been sick a long time of work, they'll be called in.
Yeah.
Then they'll be established where they are with their academics, they don't get any further behind.
Oh, and I understand that, I'm just thinking of extra work.
And we'll just, everybody will be there together to discuss. It's advantageous, I believe, absolutely.
Hey, Mr. Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Justice.
The amendment is to accept policy forty-four hundred as presented, I mean, the motion, sorry.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wildabour?
Aye.
Mr. Bulleye?
Aye.
Ms. Crago?
Yes. Okay, so that passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work, and please commend your team, because that has been a long one coming too. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have, oh, Mr. Bulleye, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no, you're good, you stay. He's just going to introduce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our June Policy Committee meeting, the committee discussed amending existing policy thirty-five forty, and in particular, a parent's choice to opt in versus opt out their student's participation in the sex education portion of the health curriculum. During that meeting, the committee recommended, including the words "and" safety in the title of the policy, the committee is in favor of amending the policy for the attached red line version, and I will turn it over to Ms. Fason to discuss those changes and answer any questions.
So, as stated, we have added "and" safety in our title. We also included that this is beginning in seventh grade, but it ends in the ninth grade. We also incorporated the two classes that we offer, sixth through eighth, because fifth grade, we have just one class, but in sixth through eighth, our parents actually have a choice. And the biggest things, biggest thing that we're asking, and the biggest change with this policy is, in fifth through eighth grade, parents will have to choose to opt in to the courses. And one of the things that we wanted to point out is, they have a choice. In sixth and eighth grade, they have a choice between stepping stones or my life. So parents would actually not only opt in, but then they will choose which are the courses that the parents, I mean, their child would actually participate in. Of course, you know, in ninth grade, it is part of our health and PE course that the students are, receive the reproductive system. They can, parents can, opt out of that particular aspect of health and PE, just that component. So we are leaving that the same. So we want it in fifth and eighth grade, fifth through eighth grade, that parents make this election, not only because of the age of the student, but also because they have choices in sixth, in sixth through eighth grade. But in high school, there would be an opt-out, because this is already a state requirement, and with scheduling purposes. So I'll take any questions. And Ms. Newman is here as well.
Sorry, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Justice? And these, I've had some comments from the audience, they can't hear you, so could you pull your microphone up to your mouth?
Oh, sorry about, sorry about that. Okay. So, right now, presently, it's an opt-out program?
Presently, yes.
Between the sixth and eighth grade?
Yes. And five through, fifth through eighth grade is presently opt-out, and we want to make it opt-in, to give parents more of a choice on that.
Fifth through eighth grade?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm not sure how that goes, I mean, they should have a choice one way or the other, it sounds like. Okay, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, do I?
Move to adopt the policy as amended?
Is there a second? Second. Any more discussion? Okay, Mr. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wildabour?
I'm going to say, because of the, as I said before, I think it needs to be opt-in all the way around, so I'll say no.
Mr. Bulleye?
Aye.
Ms. Crago?
Aye. Okay, so that passes six to one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the work on that as well. Okay, so next up on our agenda is new business. We don't have any? Yay. We, so next up would be, well, let's go through, committee reports. I didn't ask anybody, you know, to do that, so we're, we have none of those correspondence, we have none of those announcements. I'm going to go ahead and just read these announcements. The following are meetings in which the board of ed, board members are participating. The policy committee will meet on Tuesday, July nineteenth, at nine AM here in the Board of Education Center. The Board of Education Town Hall Meeting will be held Tuesday, July nineteenth, beginning at five PM and ending at seven PM, per board policy, in the Board of Education Center. August, the, the August regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, August the second, beginning at five, here in the Board of Education Center. Okay, so now that, that brought us back to the second closed session. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the, the reasons for first closed session?
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. There will be no more business when we come back, except to adjourn, just so everybody knows.
If you don't want this adjourned, you can hang.
If you don't want us to adjourn, you can hang.
We are back in...
Open session.
In open session. Next on our agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we adjourn.